Sorry, sorry.
There are two or three that have more seniority.
Have your attention, please. We're calling the meeting to order. I'd like to call the meeting to order, please.
The mail I always bring.
And then.
Hmm. Hey.
Well.
Wait, search this.
Hmm.
Search this. Kind of front row.
Sonia.
It's your mic, guys.
That's like.
Sorry.
Salam, they swear.
Leader of stray running.
Constitution of the United States.
The state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Perform the duties.
And perform the duties.
Kane County Chairman.
Of Kane County Chairman.
To the best of my ability.
To the very best of my abilities.
Thank you, God. May God be with you. Thank you.
In the name of God.
When I sign the oath of office. And the rest of you being sworn up today, would you please, not sworn to, but sworn, and today, would you please?
Could you use a microphone so we can hear you? Like the mic?
No.
If you're being sworn at, he said, go up front.
Sworn at?
There you go. Wait.
Come on.
Said bring him.
Okay.
What is this, Sarah?
Me too.
Yeah. Unless you already guessed it.
No.
You have to go on to get enough.
I already did. I could get our feet.
You know?
We had not.
I would do it off. He's calling by eight.
You what?
Oh, man, that's gonna end.
That's the most mistake.
You all raise your right hand. I had to make sure I.
I can't.
I swear.
Hear you.
So I swear. Inter mer.
Constitution of the United States.
More the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Constitution of the State of Illinois.
Form the duties.
Perform the duties.
Kane County Board Member.
Kane County Board Member.
And also a Commissioner in the Kane County Forest Reserve.
And also.
County Forest.
County Forest.
You are sworn in for official business.
All right.
Sign these.
Um, why do we put them over there?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yes. I'd be pledged a leaky.
Four years.
What, pictures?
You need to go up and get them.
Two now, now. He didn't say.
Uh-oh.
Thank you, God. I already got sworn.
Sorry, man, you're out. Well, if you take it twice, chances are you will pick up all those little things along the way.
I would've signed it up. All right.
You're right. We are dressed like the Bobby.
Okay. I will. So glad you won.
Sure. Be careful. Strip of.
I, I, it's twenty years ago. I just told him, I'm so glad you won that election.
Thanks for all of us.
Ready.
I think. No, not for the whole.
So, welcome, everybody, and, uh, to our very first county board meeting of the new board. Uh, quite exciting, new beginnings, new opportunities. Uh, so we'll begin with roll call. Ellen.
Ellen, please.
Bates.
Bates, glad to be here.
Berman.
Berman is here.
Dordi.
Dordi here.
Garcia.
Here.
Gums.
Here.
Ichbal.
Ichbal present.
Uh, Jubie.
We're here.
Grape.
Present.
Kias.
I don't know how to do it, because Kenyon didn't get called.
Leonard.
Leonard here.
Louis.
Louis here.
Linder.
Linder here.
Melina. Penises.
Penises here.
Hey, Roth.
Roth here.
Sanchez.
Sanchez present.
Uh, Silva's gone. Strathman.
Strathman here.
Sergeis. Tarver.
Tarver's here.
Tepe.
Tepe here.
Williams.
Williams present.
Young. Madam Chair, you're here. You do have a quorum. Welcome. Wonderful. Uh, so now we are going, uh, to see if there's any remote attendance requests. Are there any remote attendance requests? Dordi? None?
A do, a Dordi.
Dordi? Dordi? Oh, Mr. Dordi, of course. Hi.
Hi.
So, um, traditionally, uh, when somebody wants for new board members, uh, we ask the reason why. We know that Mr. Dordi is not able to attend. Uh, he has sustained illness, uh, so we always welcome him on, uh, immediately, uh, without question. So, oh, do I have your permission to allow Mr. Dordi in?
Consent.
Yes. Welcome, Mr. Dordi. Uh, we hope you had a lovely Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
All but the turkey had a good time.
Yeah. The next, uh, the next thing is the Pledge of Allegiance, and since Ms. Allen brought the lovely point, said us, why don't we do that? And I will be, I have the privilege and honor of doing both the invocation, um, and then I have some comments as well, so.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and its representative government, for which stands one nation, with liberty and justice for all.
So going forward for our new board members, each one of you are going to be assigned an in, the top opportunity for an invocation and for the Pledge of Allegiance. Uh, you'll be getting that list starting in February, so for this meeting as well as for the January meeting, I will be doing both, um, and because I can start out at the beginning, um, and then you'll be moved forward each one, one month for twenty-four months. Awesome. You'll have plenty of advance notice, but today I'd like to, um, give a little fine words by a man that I had long respected as I was growing up. I'd like to share this invocation, uh, which is inspired by the teachings of Pope John Paul II. This well-beloved Pope urges to recognize the dignity and rights of every person, and as we come together today for the first time as a group of twenty-five elected officials, let our hearts be open and our minds be attuned to the call for harmony. Grant us the wisdom to engage in respectful dialogue, to listen deeply to one another, and to celebrate our shared humanity. May we foster a spirit of cooperation, embracing our differences as a source of strength and a blessing. Help us to work together for the common good, building a community rooted in love, understanding, and in this time, peace. In our actions, let us reflect the respect that is due to all, no matter what their circumstances, and as we embark on this journey, fill us with courage and compassion, guiding us to walk hand in hand towards a brighter future for Kane County. Amen. Amen. So I believe we have Mark Avlar for public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and Kane County Board Members, and also a new countywide elected official. Of course, Dr. Silva is in the audience, formerly of the county board, and not knowing how many more times I can attend the first meeting of a new county board session in person, I just want to bid welcome to all, especially the new county board members, and of course, the vacant seat that you will appoint in due time for District Seven. Many issues have been discussed over the last two years. I remember coming before legislative in December, two years ago, to kick off that committee and with public comment. So as this epiphany, the beginning of a journey for all of y'all in this session, no matter how long y'all have served, I know, Ms. Allen, you've been since the turn of the century, um, the senior board member, may all, as the invocation said, harmony, discussion, respectful discussion. We know you're not going to agree on everything, but you're going to agree on most things, and as issues come forward, whether it's within the county's purview of business or what some of our elected officials are doing in Springfield and Washington, especially with the new Congress and the new administration, may the county be able to use its bully pulpit to allow local residents to work through you in order to influence policy in the way that the residents would want to see, not just within the government of the county, but also from the residents themselves. We know that the referendum is on the ballot for April first, and how that's going to shake out is going to be up to the voters. It's a different electorate than what we saw on November fifth, but the, we, the people, did speak. We, the people, want constructive dialogue, want solutions, obviously, for what you can, what is affordable for all, to be able to pay through property taxes, and we, I was hearing some of the conversations from here of an hour ago. Many costs are going up. Many local businesses are closing. And yet, with what direction and guidance that all of y'all can do to implement public policy, to allow for the opportunity for residents to thrive, for residents to live, and those who choose to retire here can live as affordably as possible and not think they have to move to other states to do that. By all means, do that within your power. Be guided from the wisdom and the light from above, and by all means, let's make this happen. Go to it. Go get them. Thank you all so much.
Is there anybody?
No, I haven't. Just him.
That concludes our public comment. So I just have a few words. Sorry. I'd like to welcome all of our new board members and welcome to the new board. It is with considerable pride and immense gratitude that I extend my warmest congratulations to our newly elected board members. It was a hard-fought battle. Any campaign is full of challenges, both personal, financial, and time. Uh, so congratulate to all of you for your bravery and consideration for running. Today marks not only a personal achievement for each one of you, but also a significant moment for Kane County. Your election is a testament to your dedication, hard work, and unwavering belief in the values which bind us together. You have taken on the immense responsibility of leadership, and with it comes the opportunity to make a lasting impact. As Abraham Lincoln once said, "The best way to predict your future is to create it." Your vision and commitment to serving our community are vital as we face the opportunities that lie before us. I am confident, fully confident, that each of you will bring your unique perspectives and talents to the table, fostering a collaborative spirit that will uplift and strengthen our beloved county. Congratulations on your well-deserved victory. Congratulations to each one of you. Together, we may look forward to witnessing the positive changes you will usher forward, and but let us remember, and I will continue to repeat this, to support one another as we embark on this journey, for by working together, we will bring for, we will forge a brighter, greener, and more compassionate future for everyone. So please, congratulations, and if you haven't met the person who's sitting next to you right now, do say hello. All righty. Already completed, um, our new business examination of certificates of election. We have already sworn in our board members. That was taken care of. So now to business. This will be a short, uh, county board meeting, so don't get your hopes up that they're all going to be this way. So the first is, may I have a motion and a second, uh, to discuss and possibly pass Resolution twenty-four dash five oh one?
Sanchez moves.
And thank you.
Sanchez in.
And.
Second, Linder?
Okay.
Linder.
Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Ellen.
Ellen, aye.
Bates.
Bates, yes.
Berman.
Berman, yes.
Dordi.
Dordi is.
Okay. Uh, I'm going to be out of order here. Garcia? Yes or no?
Yes.
Penises?
Penises, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Ichbal?
It's yes or no?
You're not voting on the.
Well, he wasn't here for it.
Yes.
For the.
Oh, yes.
Yes. The resolution, okay. Jubie?
Jubie, aye.
Grape?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Lena's not here. Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Strathman?
Strathman, yes.
Mr. Sergeis? No. Tarver?
Tarver, yes.
Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams?
Williams, yes.
Mr. Young? Not here. Okay. That passes. Okay, good. So before we go to the next resolution, next steps, um, I have signed a letter, uh, that is going out today, uh, to our, both of our mutual Republican and, uh, Democratic county chairs, uh, who will be notified of the opening of this, um, opportunity for District Seven. During the period of time, we will be putting an announcement in the paper, uh, that will state that, uh, candidates will have about two weeks to submit their letter of interest as well as their resume. Uh, I will make the appointment with advice and consent of the board, uh, and that will be brought forward to you most likely at the January, hopefully has to be by the end of January, but I would like it to be completed, uh, with due haste, so it'll be done in the January board meeting, pending your approval. Okay, so that'll be our next steps. Yes, sir.
A chevron would suggest, uh, adding to the minute, say, single sentence reciting the basis for the Declaration of Vacancy. I know it's a, a resolution, right?
Okay, can you, I didn't quite understand.
Right.
Microphone.
See, as, as I understand it, stands, uh, because of the resignation to assume another office.
That's correct.
Of the District Seven Board Representative Monica Selt.
Correct, and Dr. Silva did sell, uh, send me her le, letter of resignation, uh, which was on November thirtieth at eleven fifty-nine PM. So, and congratulations, Dr. Silva, again. Thank you. We look forward to hearing your reports of your first month on the job. All right. May I now have a motion and a second, uh, to discuss and possibly approve item number twenty-four dash five oh two?
Gums will move.
Thank you, Ms. Gums.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Any discussion on these bond, on the bonding? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll. Ellen?
Ellen, aye.
Bates?
Bates, yes.
Berman?
Yes.
Dordi?
Dordi is.
Garcia?
Yes.
Penises?
Penises, yes.
Gums?
Gums, yes.
Ichbal?
Ichbal, yes.
Jubie?
Jubie, aye.
Grape?
Yes.
Kias?
Kias, yes.
Leonard?
Leonard, yes.
Louis?
Louis, yes.
Linder?
Linder, yes.
Roth?
Roth, yes.
Sanchez?
Sanchez, yes.
Strathman?
Yes.
Tarver? Tepe?
Tepe, yes.
Williams?
Yes.
That passes. All right. All right. Um, we're going on to our next item, which is appointments to the county board. Um, I want to let you know as we pass these out that it was done with a lot of labor, uh, a lot of Thanksgiving, the, uh, holiday time being spent on this. There are thirteen committees and twenty-four board members, and I would like to, uh, commend Vern Tepe for giving up his time, Dale Berman for giving up his time, and Chris Kias for giving up a lot of time, uh, for putting this together. Uh, we had a series of meetings, um, hours were spent on deliberation. Uh, matter of fact, the last change came in late, uh, late yesterday evening. Uh, so, um, we are passing this forward to you. Um, I'd like your consent on this, and I'd also like to share with you that if you are in a committee, that you feel that is, just you'd like to serve on another committee, all you'll have to do is to find another person that you can exchange that with, so it's an equal one-to-one, right? You can, you're all elected officials, um, and you can just simply exchange, all right, so that, but we will need to have that final listing of any changes or amendments that you would like to make besides the committee chairs um, by next Monday, because we have to put this document and it has to be final, because all of your committees are starting. The committee chairs will be meeting this week, uh, so they have to move pretty quickly with this, but the committees, uh, for executive committee, the committees can be, if you feel that you'd rather serve on one or another, it's independent choices for you, but we made, we tried to make the best choices we possibly could based on the list that you provided to us. So we looked very carefully at that list. Not everyone got everything, but you all got most of what you wanted. Uh, given those parameters of twenty-four board members, thirteen committees. So that's, um, hope you like it, because we worked very hard on it.
Madam Chair, could I add to that? You had said that not everybody got everything they wanted, and nobody got everything they wanted. Not, there was no, not one person that got everything that they requested.
Oh. Our Chief of Civil, Mr. Frank, um, I believe this does not have to get voted upon, does it not? Or do we have to do advise and consent?
Chevron, I believe, is just acceptance by the board. I believe, uh, in the past, they.
I believe in the past, they.
Okay, okay.
Good.
So we will, I will give this to you for your consideration. Next week, when we meet with the board, we'll have your advice and consent with this, because at that time, you've had the opportunity to review it. It is a complicated document, so we'll make final determination of that next week. So this, consider this a, a final draft, as it were, but definitely can be the completed document, depending. The chair is, the orange is supposed to be yellow. Yes.
May I have a question?
Of course.
So I'm just curious what the, what the criteria was for being removed from a committee? Because as I see it, I have been removed from finance, which I felt I did a excellent job on. And I have been put on to committees that I really have no interest in being on, but I'm just curious, why was I pulled from finance?
I can speak to about that separately.
I would like to hit in public, in a public meeting, please. Why was I pulled from finance?
Let me get your, right here, Ms. Tubby. Hold on a second. So you're on admin. Do you have the, I don't have the list of your requests.
My question was, why was?
No, I understand your question, ma'am. I, I heard your question loud and clear. Mike, I'd like to know, because I didn't not bring the paperwork down with me to answer your question appropriately. I don't have the list of the committees that you've asked for, because you have just made allegations that you were serving on committees that you don't ask.
I asked the same committees I had prior. I did not ask for any new committees. I asked for admin, I asked for finance, I asked for ag, and I asked for public health. My question is, why was I removed from finance?
There are other board members who also wanted to serve on that committee as well?
So I was removed for some, so someone else could be put on finance?
That was one of the reasons?
Was I not, was I removed because I did a poor job on finance?
I'm not going to evaluate whether or not you, it's not.
Well, if I'm removed from a committee, I would assume it was because you felt that I wasn't good enough on that job.
Ma'am, as I said before, if you would like to negotiate with somebody else.
I'm not negotiating. I'm asking a question, what the criteria was that removed me?
I have, I do not have the ability nor the authority to judge whether or not you did a fine job or not.
Then why was I removed?
Because there are other people who wanted to serve on that committee as well.
Well, why was I removed instead of someone else?
I cannot answer that question for you.
Thank you.
All right. So if there's no other questions?
Question.
Yes, yes.
What does the asterisk indicate next to various commissioner?
I knew that, that was, that should have been removed. That should have been removed.
I think that's the problem, children.
Well, then I would expect to see that on Commissioner Strathman's.
We don't.
Her name was too long. There wasn't room for the asterisks.
Mr. Roth, you had several of them. All right. So this is for you to review, and we will, again, if you have any changes that you would like to make on it, if you could get us no later than Monday, so we can change the grid, and that we will lock this in again on Tuesday for your advise and consent to move this forward. But we will, at this time, all the committee chairs have to meet, because of the executive committee meeting does meet on Wednesday, to put the agenda together for next week's board members. Without the board meeting, without having the executive committee chairs, we cannot move forward with this. The other committees, I see you, ma'am. The other committees, there'll be ARPA committee, other series of committees. Once this is done, we will populate that as well, so you'll get, because those are statute. The county code has certain restrictions on who can serve on those committees, but I wanted to get this finalized first. Yes, yes.
I'll ask you later.
Okay. Okay. So if there's no other business of this board?
Madam Chair, Gums, I have a question. At, at what point do we do the vice chair?
Believe me.
Okay. Could you ask, ask the question again, please?
At what point do we do our vice chair spot?
The vice.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Thank you. Yeah. What was the question? Question was, when do we do the vice chair? And the answer is not today.
It, it'll be done next week.
Oh.
Okay. All right. With no further discussion? Is everybody fine? Yes, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I have a question. How do you negotiate with John Doe?
That was my question, too. Yeah.
It could be a Jane Doe. Could be Jane. We do not, we do not. Mr., Mr. or Ms. Doe is just in place, is placeholder at this point. And they will not be brought in again until January. So it's very hard to negotiate. If you'd like to negotiate with Mr. or Ms. Doe, just call me.
I see. Okay.
I, I'd like to negotiate, too.
Well, then, again, remember, just all you have to do is let me know.
Okay.
Okay, just let me know.
The second question, Madam Chair, is about the new and the unfinished business. Is, are we at that level? Or it looks like the agenda has been moved back and forth.
If you, do you have new business?
Yeah, I'd like to know. We are having two board meetings, one on the 9th, and then a few hours later on the 10th, another board meeting. I understand the board meeting of the 10th, but I don't know what the significance of the meeting of the 9th is.
It is the official. You do not have to attend that meeting. We do have to have a quorum. Because of the fact that this county board had to be sworn in officially, but did not have the opportunity to be sworn in by Chief Judge Villa, because of the business of the board had to be taking place due to the timing, because Thanksgiving and then the executive board all happening so quickly that we had to have the executive board in place. Why this board is sworn in, it did not have the opportunity to have Chief Judge Villa, which has been the tradition to have the county board sworn in, so that the press can be invited, family can be invited, and a reception could be had with more formality, sir. So that is the reason for that meeting.
So the presence is not required?
If you, if you'd like to come, your presence is never required at a board meeting. That is your option. You know that. It is expected that you do come as an elected official, but it is never required.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
What about legal and legal claims? I don't see that on this list. Am I missing that? That's ad hoc.
That's ad hoc.
Okay.
Got to get the base done first. Any other questions? All right. So may I have a motion in a second to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Ickball? Second, Mr. Linder. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is convert, convened until?